Okay. Very good. Everybody here? Okay. I'd like the call to order, the Town and McCandless Meeting for April 11th. First off, the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You. We always start off with, we're here to work together. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect because in the end, we are all neighbors. And thank you for all those that are attending. A few announcements here. This person to my left, Anna Jewitt, is our interim. Stand in for the solicitor this evening. So, welcome Anna. You grew up in what, Boston area or you went to school?
I went to school in the Boston area. I grew up in Ithaca, New York.
Okay. Do you a Buffalo Bills fan, New England Patriots, or Pittsburgh Steelers fan?
My husband's making me a Steelers fan.
Very good. Well, welcome this evening. A few things, we have a town litter cleanup day. We had a successful one last weekend. The next one is April 23rd. We have a treasures in the trunk that the Activities Committee is going to be putting on. That is May 21st. For those that are interested in supporting our library, the library has their annual garden gala. It is April 23rd this year. There are tickets online. I think they still have some available. I think they're sold out of their VIP tickets. They were gracious enough to extend Town Council two tickets. My wife and I had already purchased tickets, so we don't need them. I think Jason is a sponsor, Mr. Singer's a sponsor. So if anyone on council is interested in those two tickets, just grab me after the meeting or shoot me an email or a text and I'll get those to you. Our Heritage Center has a speaker on the history of North Park on April 27th. We have a volunteer recognition dinner on May 12th. I think letters were sent out to the volunteers and to council members. Not. We still have our leaf compost available. Is there still some there? Jeff? Okay, Jeff's nodding his head. So first come, first served. We also have a website user experience survey that's on our website as we start to update and change that. And I noticed, I think it's in Chief's Hawk Report, but I will say now, was it Black Diamond Rental? Is it that they donated a lighting tower for police force? So, yeah, so a big, a big thanks, a big thanks to them. I think that's it. Does anybody else in council have an announcement or anything? Okay, very good. Moving on, for those that are here in person or those that are online, if anyone would like to make a comment here in person, on the agenda items only, we'll have comments sections that later on as well. Those that are in here in person, just please come up to the microphone. Those that are online, if you could type your name and address into the chat box and we'll see where and we'll call on you. So first, we'll start here. Your name.
10529 Abby Lane.
Mr. Director, thank you. Go ahead.
And I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the agenda item for the redistricting later on in the agenda. As many of you know, I'm the Chair of the McCandless Democratic Committee, so I'm pretty familiar with numbers for the districts and everything. And it's amazing how well our wards are drawn. But the precincts, and I think as a practical matter, and I know that if you read the charter, it really says the purpose of the redistricting is to redistrict the wards to keep them. But as a practical matter, when you see the lines at several of the voting places where we have at Memorial Park, 1,600 plus people in one ward and only 1,000 in another, there's always a long line there. Northmont is the same way, the disparity between the two ward, the two precincts that vote there, one's always got a waiting line and the other one's always walk right in. And I don't know if there's a practical way to do that at the end of the day, but that's the one thing I see from being around at all the polls on election day is people complain about, why is our line so long? And these other guys just walk right in and walk back out and we're still in line. Because the, the difference in some of them is massive. It's not just a little bit. It's hundreds of voters difference between the lines going in to one polling place with the other. So something to think about as we get into that discussion later tonight. Thank you.
Give your comments. Anybody else here in the council chambers that wants to make any comments? Saying none? Do we have anybody online?
No.
No one online? Okay. Good. Moving on here. Looking for approval of the March 28th minutes. They were in our packet. Does anybody have any comments or changes they want to make to the meeting minutes?
I moved to approve the minutes of Town Council for March 28th, 2022.
Second, Dr. Roppa. Everybody in favor? Second, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Next up, we'll go to each committee head to do their reports. Dr. Roppa, do you want to lead us through yours?
Police report is in your packet and she has questions or she has anything to add.
You all have it, but I feel many questions. You're discussing anything.
Anybody have questions? I have one.
Certainly.
It says that you're, we made offers to social workers from Slippery Rock.
Yes, sir. Masters degree students. I think we talked, brushed on it last month.
Yep.
To accept it for.
Yeah.
Mid August.
I guess my question is, at our seminar this past weekend, you know, we heard a lot of good things about it. I'm certainly in support of it. But it seemed like they had some more senior guidance to properly implement the program. So like, I'm sure these are very sharp students, but they're students. So how are you going to tackle that or what's your thoughts?
So the program's been kind of in place for a couple of years in Hampton, right next door, in contact with Chief Alakovich over there for guidance, maybe, you know, see what policies he's implemented. His social worker that was originally a student and is now an employee over in Hampton Township has been involved with me in the interviews of these women. And she's going to help me implement it here in the town.
Okay.
And she's been doing it for at least a couple of years in Hampton. So I think she has a pretty good handle. She's very involved over there in numerous aspects of things that traditionally police have handled, but maybe not the best option. Hoarding situation or maybe an elder situation where somebody's elderly needs some services. These are things that the police have tried to, you know, assist folks with over the years. Maybe now a social worker can help in that regard.
They start in August and how long is their internship?
From what I'm told, we will get them around mid-August through the end of the school year, I believe sometime in April. Oh, nice. 15 week, 15 hours a week per intern. So hopefully we'll get about 30 hours a week between the two of them. Thanks, sir. Sir, anybody else have questions?
From what we saw at that conference, you couldn't have a finer person helping you. So I'm glad you engaged her.
Good to hear.
And I'd also like to, on behalf of the Environmental Committee, thank you and thank the five police officers that helped with litter cleanup this weekend.
I'll pass the message. Hopefully it went well.
They, they really, really enjoyed the interface.
Good to hear. Okay. Keep them safe. Okay, folks, I won't hold you up except to point out, we had a lot of training in March. We had a few officers read to children at Peoples Elementary in March, their request, and we obliged. Other things I wanted to say real quick, the Bigs in Blue Program was re-implemented last month. We've had two or three meetings with the students. I think they're about third or fourth grade. I'm one of the three of us that can participate right now. So we're doing that. I think it's being well received so far at McKnight Elementary. Gives us an opportunity to kind of be a big brother to a student that they've identified in need. We had a roving DUI patrol in March. And as you mentioned, Mr. President, that there was a generous donation from Black Diamond Equipment to the town. The emergency services, I think it's available to us, rode through fire departments. And it's helpful.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The fire marshal's report, again, it's in your packet. If anyone has any questions.
I think it's all there. Does anybody have any comments?
I see that it says a list of buildings with solar panels was compiled. Why is that important? Or is my guess, just from my knowledge?
Sure. One of the things that I did in my former town borough, we call it, is compile a list of properties that had solar panels. The reason it's important for firefighters to know that is because they don't want to be going up on the roof if that building's on fire. You want to stay away from the solar panels. So it's good to pre-plan that, knowing that when you're dispatched to it, that the Allegheny County, they'll flag it as long as we update them. And then on dispatch, they'll let them know that this building has a solar panel on it. So they already know that they'll go up there and bet the roof because you want to stay away from it. It's a shock hazard.
Makes sense.
Safety, right?
Yep, thank you.
Wow.
I, thank you for joining us today. I'm just looking at the annual report in terms of the fire alarms built versus fire alarm fees collected. You know, happy to see we've collected here in March, but is there progress on the ones that have been built through January, February?
Yes, yes. And I'm glad you brought that up. One thing that the numbers I had in the previous months might have been, actually don't might have, but have probably been a little skewed because I kind of was grouping all the fire alarms into the false alarm, even though it shouldn't be.
Okay.
So that's all been corrected now. So this is gonna, it's gonna be more accurate from here on out.
Great, thank you.
And the ones that are in there, you'll see March, like we had 11. The ones that weren't built, those were first offenders.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If there's any questions or anything that we need to follow up on, please let me know.
I did have a question about code enforcement. If it pleases the council, I would like to ask the town to, again, this year to send a letter to all the campaign, appropriate campaign committees, reminding them of what our ordinance, temporary sign ordinance is and the what it is and, you know, what it means. The sign's already going up. Maybe we can save a little roadside cleanup and keep our storm sewers a little cleaned out.
I think that's a valid point. I had two calls about that.
If that's all right with all of council, we send those letters, official letters.
Sure.
Personnel board, there is a copy of the minutes in your packet. The slider's not here this evening.
Primary discussions in the personnel board, Ryan, follow up with, if I miss anything, had to do with just confirming the changes in the two ordinances that the town or the council will be considering this evening and then making preliminary plans for the testing for the police office.
Are we making, are there any specific efforts being made to attract some diversified applicants?
We're actually planning on advertising in new areas where we can reach out to minorities and other groups. So we're trying our best to get that word out to where we think we need that.
Perfect. One of my patients this week was a Pittsburgh police officer and I hit her up for her before I put her to sleep. I don't know if she'll remember or not, but I'm doing my part, just so you know.
Somebody told me about it, John.
I don't know who was.
We had our quarterly meeting. The report is in your packet. A lot was discussed. It was my first meeting in person. You know, we reviewed a few things, as you'll see on there. Addition to that, I've done tours of the three fire departments, just to familiarize myself with, you know, the apparatuses, the facilities and things like that. So, you know, I think positive steps moving forward. Bobby, have anything you want to add to that?
Um, no.
I'm sorry, I have something else too. I wanted to also, I noticed that they're starting their donation drive and that our next McMail is going to be going out in the spring and that that's a super good place to put out maybe a tear out that they can that, that will go to every citizen. I know we talked about sending a letter. It was mentioned in, but letters are so expensive, but if we put that in our McMail, it goes to every house and then people could tear that out.
And maybe we could.
Letter focused to businesses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So not quite as expensive as
Right.
all of the houses. But I think that the primary concern expressed during that meeting was the lack of donations from businesses. So that the letter focused on that. McMail can be more general, I think.
Just, just an idea.
Thank you. Any public comment on public safety? They went online? No. Okay, that includes all the courts.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Singer, if you could lead us through the Facility Management Committee?
Sure. First item on here is Public Works Activity Report. Jeff, if you don't mind, stepping forward and doing a briefing.
Hello. Um, I report this. Like to just go over the snow events and stuff like that, but then want to touch a little more Vestal Field, but this March compared to last, we had eight snow events versus four from last year. Total was 17.1 inches of snow as compared to 9.5 the year before. As you can see, that the pavilion permits have taken off. We've issued 22 in the month of, in the month of March and actually had several more last week. Perform four signal repairs for traffic signals. Perform two inspections for the signals. Those are also being recorded via the T-SAMS with the state. Construction projects. We've been repairing catch basins and putting pipe in the ground in preparation for the paving program coming up. We're actually probably going to regret saying this, but we're actually ahead of schedule on that and probably until tomorrow and then that'll all change. But as far as Vestal Fields, or Vestal Field, we did go ahead and have our folks to shave cost on the inspection. Our people dug 18 inches deep all the way around every one of those light poles. I'm sure you've all received the report that it came back as acceptable. The poles are in acceptable condition, except for one, which was pole nine, came back as some minor deficiencies on the exterior of the pole. I've reached out to six or seven contractors. It hopes to get immediate pricing to get the pole replaced. Even the folks that replaced the last one, I'm still waiting for pricing. The big thing now is delivery of the pole. I guess it has to be trucked from a certain, certain location and they're way behind. So as of Friday, I was supposed to have it, as of Thursday, I was supposed to have it Thursday or Friday at the earliest. As today, as of today, I was supposed to get it, the quote from them today or tomorrow morning. As soon as I get that information, I'll pass it on to you. One positive thing is pole nine, that was the one that was flagged for having some exterior issues, is only it only lights the, like the batter up warm up station. Just so happens that the pole next to that is the one that fell two years ago. That already has LEDs on it. So if we eliminate pole nine, just add one LED fixture to the existing pole, we don't have to replace that one at all. So that should save some cost. As far as the batting cages, I think we discussed the last time that one of them was completely destroyed. The other one was I think from the stress of the cables being pulled on it, it rendered the other one pretty useless also. I know they weren't constructed very well at the beginning. We went ahead and replaced both batting cages with heavy wall pipe, the right fasteners. The guys went down there today to, I should say, the crew went down there today and started installing the nets. We also trenched the right side of the parking area to get the water away from the field. And we do have some other light excavating to do though. And I think that's it for my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Park open?
What's that?
Is Vestal open?
Yes, it's open.
Okay, so it's, it's safe?
Yes, it's safe. The bathrooms are open. Everything, everything is, right now, everything is, is up and running. As soon as I get the information, the, any question, I'm, any concern that I have is if we do decide to replace this pole this year, I don't know when we can even get it. So that'll all, I'm sure it's probably eight weeks out, if I guess correctly, but. And then the other thing I wanted to discuss was the tennis courts. We end up getting no bites, no bids at all on the tennis courts. So immediately the same day, I reached out to seven of the vendors. We sent it to 12, but I reached out to seven of them. For the vendors, their first thing was scheduling conflicts, which the length of time needed to do the job was too short. Normal conditions two years ago wouldn't have been a problem, but the way materials and delivery, you know, everything's so uncertain, they didn't want to be fined for going over the due date. The other issue we had, one guy was nice enough to actually call me and he wanted to bid on the job. He said, but you know, we gave these folks five weeks to bid. And he said, he was still waiting for pricing from his contractors, just to bid on the job. So I took a bunch of the input there. We are going to put it back out to bid. I'm hoping to have it back out by Wednesday or Thursday, if I can. The, the normal timeframe was start in May. We wanted the project done by the end of July. It's looking like we're going to put it out for the beginning of June and have it extend all the way to the end of October. So that's the only way that we're going to get folks who want to bid on it. So. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, Liaison Reports, Environmental Advisory Committee, Mr. Casey.
In addition to the minister, your packet, I'd like to inform everybody that the EAC had their first cleanup of the year on Saturday. Apparently it hailed four times and rained once, but other than that, the conditions were wonderful. So far, they have since inception of, spring of 2018, collected over 1,450 bags of garbage, as well as additional car parts, et cetera, et cetera. This weekend, they picked up 109 bags, car parts and a wallet, which they turned into the police department because it still had credit cards. Again, they would like to thank the five police officers that helped. Would like to know if we could get the DPA, the Public Works Department to maybe follow certain crews where conditions are hazardous. One of the police officers was actually concerned that he was going to have, he was going to be rear-ended because of the location where they were, they were cleaning. So we need a little bit of coordination between you two to, to try to prevent a future accident. That said, April 23rd will be the next cleanup. We would greatly appreciate it if council would share that on their websites, as well as send emails out to their constituents and friends. We could take all the help we can get. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Casey and the Environmental Committee? Depending, no questions, we'll move on to the Technology Committee. Ms. Roppa?
We had our meeting last Tuesday.
The committee discussed the phone proposals that we received. We've had a couple of demonstrations from vendors. We're planning one more set of demonstrations or two firms that we feel are competitive in nature. And so that we're in the process of scheduling those demonstrations and then we'll be moving forward with the selection of other company for that system. The committee also briefly discussed the, the survey that is now active on the canvas in May for the website and had some discussion regarding the, moving forward with the enterprise software and the public works, building, software alternatives. So the, those things are moving forward as well, I think. In a nutshell, I think that covers the meeting.
I know, just a comment, I know we use Civic Plus for our website currently now.
Correct.
While at ALAM, I did run into a company locally here, based out of the Western Pennsylvania area, GovUnity. He expressed interest of coming in and giving a presentation about what they can do and provide. I think it might be beneficial to at least have him come in for a tech meeting and see what they can do.
Yeah.
So while we're in a website update, it might be a nice idea to see what else is out there pricing wise as well. Thank you. I'll get that information to you. Any other questions for Bob or Kathy? Moving on, I don't know, three is the Stormwater Management Committee, myself as chair. We held another meeting. Kathy and I were both present. We continue to work through the ordinance. I think we really nailed down a lot of loopholes and things to that effect. We're hoping to finalize it up and get it in front of council here sooner than later. That was the main focus of that meeting. We're still requesting a general idea of cost to look at the stormwater management facilities within the pond. What do we take for, you know, a concurrent or a current report of state? A cost to bring to repair and also ability for retrofits as well. A cost to bring to repair and also ability for retrofits as well is one of our, our main focuses for that. Those are the main big items right now from stormwater management. We, we spoke briefly about some of our MS four projects and our PRP. And, you know, looking at, at particular areas where we can kill two birds with one stone, where we can possibly handle problem areas in the town and also achieve the PRP requirements at the same time. Bob, anything else to add there in the administrative end?
There was, we're still looking at budget figures as they relate ultimately to the stormwater utility, but we're fine tuning those numbers.
Yes.
In part based on the other information that you presented.
Correct, exactly. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to say that that's, you know, it's, it's progressing, but we're trying to figure out budgetary numbers first before we fund that. Any questions for myself?
Are these notes in our information? I must have missed those, are they in our folder?
They are not, we did not produce a report for that, but we could start taking some notes for that, I'm sure. Are there any public comments on facilities management? Any, any online? Before, thank you.
Back to president, thank you. Now reports of the services committee, Ms. Clunin, if you could lead us through that.
And thank you. We will begin with the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority, Mr. Casey, if you could share an information.
There's nothing else to report and I don't see any minutes in the folder. Good.
If council could just look through the minutes and follow up with Mr. Casey if you do have any questions.
Thank you.
Moving on to McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, Ms. Zachary, please, if you could share anything.
You have the official report from the authority. What is not mentioned in there is that there was a kickoff meeting with the municipalities and strategic solutions, which is the organization that we have hired to help us come in and look at the ambulance authority and see how they're doing. And there's also going to be a meet and greet planned with the board members, the director and other stakeholders, and that is being currently planned.
This may have been said before, but looking at the, the group that's looking at the authority, is there a timeline? Is there a timeline for when we would expect the results or this will take a few months for them to go through everything?
Well, would it be possible to get that, the outline of what their, the work there's going to do? And then send that, okay, reset that out to everybody.
Process might be.
Six or seven months.
Okay. Okay.
But he's, it's all lined out.
So maybe we have to start planning for budget again this fall. There's nothing further, I will move on to.
Excuse me, Ms. Clunin, I do have a question for Kim. It, it looked to me as if the authority is actually doing a study of their own on reorganization.
They're not doing a study, but they are doing a reorganization. So they're, they found some issues that they wanted to take care of before the consultant came in.
My, my question is then relative to what they're doing, are we doing our investigation prematurely?
When we started looking into this, and Bob certainly correct me here, but we've been looking into this for about a year and they have taken the initiative after us already working, putting out bids, interviewing people. Bob went to, I think Bob and Trish went to great length to find these and then they decided to do that after we had already planned these.
Because if we look at them and take a snapshot and then all of a sudden they change everything, our snapshot's going to be worthless.
I think they're through changing.
Okay, good.
And I, I'll just add to that, a lot of what will be reviewed operationally has a financial impact and I'm not necessarily talking from the expense side. Where the day to day operation in terms of the, the service provided to the citizens, but it's more along the lines of areas where collections could occur where they haven't been or where billing could occur where it hasn't. So I think there's a lot of elements that wouldn't, wouldn't be impacted by this reorganization that occurred.
Thank you.
No further questions for council? We'll move on to the Northland Public Libraries Authority.
The reports and minutes are in your packet, a couple of notes of interest. You all received the thank you, they were very appreciative of the leftover money that we provided to them in their budget. They also are making aware that they are working with the North Coast Art Center and they are collecting hula hoops for the upcoming gala. So if anybody has any interest, you can reach out to them. They have a new interactive newsletter that has gone out, they're getting a lot of positive fanfare from that interactive newsletter. They were also nominated for nonprofit excellent award from Pittsburgh North Regional Chamber of Congress there. The bad news for them is they did apply for their Keystone Grant to help supplement their front entrance way and unfortunately they were declined for that Keystone Grant. So they are going to put their entrance on hold till the following year as they seek additional grant funding. That's all I have for the Northland Report.
Are there any questions for Mr. Singer? Any further comments from council on services committee? Any public comments, those in the room? Thank you, that concludes the committee report.
Thank you, Ms. Clunin. Okay, moving on to old business, seven A, we've been looking at this for a little while. This increases our personnel board membership from three to five. And it also, we had to tweak to the, the, the term length of each member and that was included in our packets. So I guess, does anybody have any comments or concerns on where we stand today with this here?
Can you please remind council why we're expanding this personnel board?
We had excess volunteers and three was sort of, just didn't fit. And since we wanted, we're gladly, anyone that wants to volunteer to do that. And that's why we changed it from, from three to five.
Will we be looking at our other boards and committees that have excess members apply and expanding them also?
That would be up to everybody up here. So. Does anyone have a yes or no?
I, I, my personal opinion is I don't, I don't necessarily think we expanded this committee on the sense of participation. I think it was something that lent to having more input on specific matters related to our personnel board, I think is what warranted it most. There's a lot of important topics that come out of that and I think it was better served with five members than three specifically for this board for that reason. That's my understanding of the expansion. I don't know, again, others can have other varying opinions, but that's how I saw it as the, my reason why I believe it needs expanded. With that, I'm sure we can have continued discussion, but I will make a motion to adopt the tentatively identified ordinance number 1522, amending article 123, authorities, boards and commissions and article 137, personnel board of the town code of ordinances to increase the number of personnel board members from three to five and specify the term for the members thereof.
Second. And further discussion, concerns? Anyone on council? Do we have any comments from the public either in person or online? No? Okay. So that being, no more comments. That being said, everyone in favor of the Mr. Singer's motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One?
No.
Yes.
Or four?
Yes.
Five? Or seven?
Yes.
Or three?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Next up is, again, we've had some edits to this. This is the qualifications for our police officers. I know we went through it at a prior meeting and we changed some of the, some of the requirements in there that the personnel board had, had recommended. We'll start out. If anyone on council have any comments about this before we take a motion?
Um, yes, Mr. President, I had asked to have social media placed in there. I didn't see that that was placed in there. As well as having any civil suits that a person had been convicted of to be included, unless that was in somewhere in act, what was it, fifty-seven? Which was really long and hard to understand.
Fifty-seven.
Okay, that's what I couldn't tell, that was in there already. So, so we didn't have to add that separately. I would like to have the social media part put in there. I didn't see that unless that was somewhere to in act fifty-seven.
That's somewhere back.
We spoke about in.
Is it in there?
It is on page four.
Four.
It's the number, the III.
Yeah, it's the last one.
I'm just keeping track of this.
All right, thank you. Um, you know what, I, I'm looking at one that doesn't even have that in it. Was there, maybe I'm looking at the previous one. Cause that's not in the one. Okay, the, I'm saying the one I'm looking at on here, maybe it's the previous one. So thank you, those are my two concerns, which I didn't see, but thank you. That's perfect.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the tentatively identified ordinance number 1523, amending subsections 103, 202, 203, 204, 205, 208 and 303 of section 137.05 of article 137 of the town mechanics, amending the approval of minutes qualifications for employment as a police officer, establishing certain requirements for hiring pursuant to act 57 of 2020 and providing for an effective, effective date thereof.
Second, Dr. Rock. Any additional comments before, from council before we take the vote? See none? Comments from anyone in attendance in the public before we take the vote? Seeing none? And then we'll do one more. Okay, none there? Okay, everyone in favor of the motion currently presented, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, this is accepting the bid for a bomb. Accept the quotes.
Yes.
Okay.
So accepting the bid for body worn cameras and awarding recommendations awarded amount of sixty-five thousand, sixty-three dollars, twenty-five cents.
Just for those, that was competitive bid.
And just, I guess, I'll wait till the motion starts.
Okay. Is there any further comments before we entertain motion, concerns, anything?
That's not our part, that's the total bid, right? We had a one to one with the Department of Justice, right? So we're actually paying half of that, just for everybody's edification.
Yes, do we need to clarify that at all?
I don't believe we want to clear.
Okay. I was paid for, very good.
Motion to accept quotes for police department body worn cameras and award to Motorola watch guards in the amount of sixty-five thousand, sixty-three dollars.
Second? Ms. Clunin?
And I just, my comment was, this did go through the technology committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that was my one question.
Any further comments from council?
Anyone on?
Okay, no more comments. Everybody in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, moving on, new business, glass recycling. Bob, do you want to give us the 10,000 foot view?
They, you, you have a report that I prepared that gives you a lot of the background or the, you know, how we've gotten to this point in terms of the recommendation to enter into this intergovernmental cooperation agreement. After looking at a number of different alternatives, we believe that if we're going to offer a glass recycling program here in McCandless at this point, working with this intergovernmental group as well as the pestling resource council is our best option at this point. In order for the town to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, we have to adopt an ordinance to do so, to stay in compliance with our charter. That's why this is in front of you this evening. Happy to answer any questions that you might have from the report or anything else regarding this issue.
What is the term of the contract? What's the length?
The term is open end. So with ninety days, yeah, notice, we can.
Terminate our part of the deal. Okay. My other concern is what is the, what is the feel of the need of the town of it right now? How many residents are requiring it or inquiring about it? How big of a problem is it for us right now at this point? Do we have any feedback about it?
We're, do get calls, I'll say fairly regularly, asking about the glass recycling. We've probably admittedly at this point of the year, maybe not as many as we did at the beginning of the year. But it's still something that, that people would like to have. Now, the one, the estimated cost that I've given you in the report is based on the potential of having fifteen or twenty poles in the course of the year. Um, obviously if it takes longer for that container to fill, our costs will be down according. So if it is successful, we may pay a little bit more, but we're estimating it based on collections that occur in other nearby communities.
If we don't do it, are we penalized somewhere else where it costs us more money?
Well, the, the thing that we need to consider is that every year the town makes application for a recycling performance grant with the Department of Economic or Environmental Protection. And that grant is based on tonnages of material recycled. So obviously if we do not recycle gas, that number is going to get down significantly because glass is a significant amount of our tonnage or has been a significant amount of our tonnage in the recycle program. So I think if we did not do this, we would see a similar reduction in our recycling performance grant. in our recycling performance grant in the course of next year's grant.
Essentially, it's a push.
Yes.
And we're doing the right thing.
The initial buy-in, is it yearly? I, I apologize, I can't remember.
The first year buy-in is five thousand, second year is twenty-five hundred, and that's it.
And then what is the, is there an infinity term, or is this program only lasts for so long?
I think the, the grant is for five.
Okay, so it's a five-year max, ninety-day minimum.
But then, I think if, if the grant wasn't continued, then we could utilize the same container and enter into a private agreement with PRC or with Michael Brothers who the Hall.
What is the estimated cost on the Hall?
Four hundred dollars per pool.
Another communities are estimating about how many?
About twenty, about twenty pools.
Ms. Clunin, Dr. Roppa, do you have any comments or concerns?
I think the interest in our community is there. Just not getting official feedback, but just in speaking with our neighbors and friends in the community, they, they want to have glass recycling.
Do you think people would bring it here?
I think people bring their cardboard here.
My, I like the fact that we're not tied into a long-term deal for it. I still would like to pursue long-term solutions on a cog level, you know, with a, a glass grinder. You know, much like the compost is dealt with on a cog level, you know, glass will continually grow. And I worry that, you know, going down the PRC path will, will be that. I know that's in your report, you know, but I just want to make a point of emphasis of, we need to continue to explore long-term solutions at a, at a intergovernment level.
Okay, I mean, I, I fully agree with Mr. Singer on long-term solutions. But I also know that we humans are creatures of habit, and we, until January, had a habit of separating our glass, and it's still fresh. And if we start a habit now of setting aside a bin in your garage and dropping it off once a week at the town, whenever something like you're speaking of comes into place, we'll be in that habit. Because if we lose that for two years, we'll break out of it.
Do we have a location set up if we choose to go this route in the Town Hall complex somewhere? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Is Zach agree anything before we take a vote?
You were picked on.
For your comments, just like I did.
No, thank you, I'm good.
Very good. Okay. Would anyone care to take a motion?
We're trying to make a motion.
Like a motion. Like to move to adopt identified ordinance number one five two four, authorizing and approving the town's entrance into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dor- Dormont and other participating municipalities to permit the town to participate in a regional glass recycling collection network.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any last comments by anyone on council before we take a vote? Seeing none up here? Anyone in the audience like to make a comment? And online, nobody? Okay. Motion on the table, everybody in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, these are just modesty bids, so you have a, or our team has a, has a wider array of places to purchase materials at a low cost.
That good elevator. This is something that the Shea Card does twice a year with different types of commodities. This enables Jeff to look at pricing from the South Hills cog as well as the state coast source contract and make a informed decision, which is the lower cost to us. It just provides us with another alternative.
Okay. And if anyone on council have any questions, Mr. Graham, before we entertain a vote? No? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the, is it South Hills area?
South Hills area.
South Hills area Council of Governments twenty twenty-two spring commodities bid.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Casey? Any out here? Uh, we have a motion on the table, everybody in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is to appoint Mr. Wisner, our Emergency Management Coordinator. Want to give us a little background, Bob?
We have technically had the position vacant since Stan Stack left us. Jeff came to us from the Borough of Bellevue, where I think he served as the deputy, correct? So we, we do need an Emergency Management Coordinator. Ryan serves as a deputy currently. Um, Jeff has all of his, Jeff Wisner, I guess, like, because there's two of you and two Jeffs back there, I want to make sure. Specific. Jeff Wisner has all of his certifications for serving as the Emergency Management Coordinator, so he, he's already hitting the ground running for us and getting the plan updated. And then we'll be fully staffed at that point from an emergency management standpoint. I was gonna ask that it's been updated, because this is two thousand seventeen. Yeah. He's already worked.
The questions from council? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Casey? Comments from council, questions? No. Anybody from the audience or online? None tonight? Okay. Everyone in favor of the motion signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Okay. Next up, ten thousand foot overview.
Following every census, we're the first. We need to take a look at the council manor districts in the town to determine and potentially debalance populations between the various wards. So, um, this is an exercise that we need to go through in some some periods, there were no recommended changes. Other times, there have been recommended changes. But we need to select three residents of the, the town, the Service Ward Commission. And do that review to determine whether any changes are recommended.
So, it's more members of our community, not three members of the board?
It doesn't get specific. It can, because all of you as council members or residents, you qualify. With it, it doesn't matter whether it's members of the council or citizens who don't serve in other capacities. The only rec, the only requirement is that to, from one party, one from another. There can't be three from the same party, so the only other requirement.
So I guess our first one is, is it just three of us? It'd be somehow select, or we open it up to the public, and I would imagine if we open it to the public, we would want an application period and an interview period. Is that how you do this?
I, I would think that it would be handled the same way as any other candidate.
Comments from everybody?
I have a suggestion. It was brought to us by a resident of our town, as well as some of you spoke here this evening. I, I think it might be beneficial to have a representative from council, such as yourself, President Tarl, and possibly the chair of each political party in the town, one from the Republican Committee and one from the Democratic Committee. They know the numbers. They know the numbers well. They understand the problems in the polling places and things to that effect. I think that's a very open and transparent process. They were elected by their individual committees. And yourself serving as the, the Chair of Council could have that input. I also do want to speak to the, the note of wards and districts. And understand, we're only drawing the wards. Districts are actually drawn by the county level. We have no input on districts within wards. That's at a county level. They handle that. Unfortunately, that subdivision of the unevenness of numbers. And it can be, if you petition the county, they can redraw those lines in polling locations of those issues. But the, the actual process at hand for the town will be just the distribution of the wards. And that's, I, I think tonight, I don't think we should get into the weeds at all about what we think about numbers or anything yet. Just on, you know, the appointment of the committee. And I think that might be one of the, the best ways.
Let's everyone think about that, Ms. Clunin.
I agree, and I, I do agree that the actual districts inside are, are concerned. Maybe that might even be this, this committee could produce something that says, we're not, hey, you don't like it, let's all start writing to the county.
And that's why if you use your, your heads of your Republican and Democratic chairs, they have the contacts to deal with the county and start. They deal with this all the time, and that's, they're not only citizens of our town and well-informed, but they have the ability to help fix some of the other problems that are coming along later down the road.
That's everyone. Is that?
I think we would have to hear from them and see if they're willing to do it.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Maybe the first step.
And the poor independents just don't even have a voice, huh?
That's Pennsylvania, unfortunately.
No, I mean, it's a Do we know how many, how many registered, how many independents do we have in our town?
I can, I can answer that.
Yeah.
Right now, both the Democratic and the Republican parties are a couple hundred part, and the independents are about a third of each of the parties. So it's, it's a sizable number of the electorate, everything considered when you look at. It ends up being about twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand, they're about thirty-two, thirty-four, something. I didn't bring those numbers with me tonight, just the poll numbers. But it's not an insignificant portion of our population that, as Mr. Singer pointed out, they don't have a vote in the primaries unless it's typically the, when they get to the election time, unless somebody does actually register and run, which is very rare. But they do turn out in reasonable numbers, as our other people do or don't come election by. And, and this may be part of the reason why they feel somewhat disaffected.
Mr. Chairman, may I point out, the Charter says both political parties, doesn't mention independents. So we'd have to change the Charter.
Charter.
Yes, unfortunately, it's fairly explicit.
Yeah, and, and I would think that both the political chairs are, are well-informed of their independence, as I'm sure they seek their input as much as they can get. So I think there's probably a, a great representation that can be reached out to.
There is a requirement for a public here as well.
Yes, so public will have input at any time.
So it's from each party? If I chaired it and was a non-voting member, could we have an independent as the third member?
Not according to the Charter.
I, I would unfortunately, I would agree with that, that I think it's fairly explicit that it says two of one party, one of the other. Sorry.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So while it's a good idea, it doesn't sound like
And if I get, if I may interject, when, when it comes to that, remember, typically, the people that are in that other, independent other is really not a party. There is, there are some Green Party members, you there are a few other recognized or semi-recognized parties there, but they really don't have an organization where you can go to them and say
They have no leader.
Yeah, I think that's why they're
Yeah.
So what's on the table is that it would be the Chair of the McCanns Democratic Committee, the Chair of the McCanns Republican Committee, and myself on. And if one of them says no, we would be willing to let them
Perhaps they would provide someone
Provide an alternate.
Provide.
Everyone's comfortable with something like that. Ms. Clunin, is that something you're comfortable with?
Just a suggestion, you may want to ask for potentially two or three alternates if there are to provide them to get
Good point.
Yeah.
And the alternate would do what?
Just to provide, uh, council with an opportunity for a brief review of the candidates and get them an opportunity to
Oh, I see. I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, still three, but just alternate one picking.
Okay. Okay. It seems like we're all relatively, I guess, head nods, relatively. Ms. Clunin, we're
Yeah, I'm just, um, we're, we're not, I feel like I've read this one or two times, but, um, word says of the two parties.
Registered members of the same political party.
Right.
So it has to be a political party.
Okay. Not more than two of the same political party.
Yeah.
Right, so they're, what is preventing an independent individual?
They're not part of a political party. That's the, they're independent of political parties.
But if someone from the Green Party
Correct.
wanted to be on, they
Correct. That would be an argument, but my argument
So in the binaries.
Yeah. My argument would be, what sort of representation is that? If the prior, if the primary part of town, you know, sixty-six percent is affiliated within, you know, I don't have those numbers in front of me. Of the Green Party, Libertarian and whatnot, I'm sure it's a one to two percent part of town.
Okay, because I, I, because I, I had taken a note here that somebody said both political parties, but
It could be any, but I think obviously in today's world, the two majors would be the best representation.
Yeah, because it says nowhere in here, both political parties.
I think it says no more than two from any political party.
From any one.
Right.
It's very different than both parties.
Nice, nice clarification, council member.
We're all relatively comfortable with that. Do we, this is, we don't need a motion for this, do we? We, you kind of, what is the
I think council has the privilege of appointing ad hoc committees.
Yes.
Okay, so the next steps would be, we would reach out to
Reach out to the, the terror of the Democratic Committee.
See if they'd like to serve a war.
Under this.
And if they're not provide us all Do we have a timeframe on when we need to
Yeah, I mean
There, there are type
I don't think it'd be significantly different.
No, honestly. As we took a staff, we put a look at this, I think with having D, DIS capabilities and numbers of various, from the census available to us electronically, it didn't take but a few hours to just
Different.
to shuffle things around and see what the variations were. So, it's, I think it would be a much easier exercise than it may have been in the past.
I do have a question relative to, does it need to be based a hundred percent off the census? Or, we know they just built that monolith down there on Blazer Drive, and that's gonna probably have a thousand inhabitants. So, are they just excluded because they're not in there now, but they're gonna be So are they just excluded because they're not in there now, but they're gonna be in there within six months?
So your question is, is it based on the twenty-twenty numbers or a potential projection? Where do they see the, the ward growing?
Can we take, you know, hard concrete, and, and the other place would be over, that, that new residence they just put in. On McKnight Road.
They were.
They, they, they would have been. They were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would say that it. It is intended to be completed upon receipt of the census numbers.
So those are static at that time. Yeah.
And that.
But within a year, it's gonna be vastly out of proportion.
And then ten years, it'll, we'll, we'll pick it up again.
It does, you know, it, your Charter requires at least once every ten years.
You could do it in two years.
If there's a population boom and you want to reconsider it at a later date.
Okay.
Okay.
And that, I think, being realistic about it. Could we take some of that into account and. Anticipate some change? You can't. You know, I, I don't think that, you know, you have to get it. To have each ward be three and a half percent, you know, within three and a half percent of the others. So you can have some flexibility there that takes some things.
As, as stated, it's as, as practical.
Okay.
All right, you, uh, you got your enough direction?
I do.
Okay, very good. Moving on. Okay, I have a handout for this and I have extra in case someone from.
Will there be any public comment on that?
Oh, didn't have a vote difference.
Comment at the end of your business if you prefer, if you would like to provide an opportunity right now, that's sufficient.
I guess we'll take public comment from anyone in.
All heck and one oh five two nine, Abby Lane. First, I'd like to thank the Police Department for their visible presence in class. Specifically, speeds. I have noticed a significant, I think. Downward trend in some of these speeds and some of the people trying to make the lights. How fast they're gonna be going, the size of those things. So thank you very much for that. Thank you very much for glass. Ready? Just let me know when we can do this. I, I think I agree with Ms. Clunin that. Getting in the habit and then getting out of the habit, it's very hard to get people back in that habit of thinking about. What to do. It's like the habit of trying to figure out which ones are ones, twos, fives. Once you get in that habit of looking at it, you pretty much know this doesn't belong in there at, at this point in time. And, and finally. I, I think that's a good workable solution as far as the redistricting goes. Hopefully my counterpart will. Concur with that and we can, we can get on with getting that settled, but looking at, at the overall numbers. The growth is, is a question because there are a few of those areas where. We can see some things going on, but those may also be the areas that are also grossly underrepresented as a precinct. As some of the others. So I was amazed that the standard deviation is only like eighty-three people. Per ward, as far as the distribution goes. So it's not like we have one ward that is huge. We have several huge precincts, but no huge wards at this point in time that I think would make a major bust. So, thank you.
Thank you for comments. Uh, any other comments on redistricting? Anyone in the chat room? No, sure. Okay. Oh, last item on the agenda. So. Uh, Bob and I have a, a, a meeting once a week where we plan the upcoming agenda. And a lot of times I'll ask Bob for something and he's, I'm working on it, I'm working on it. You asked me this, somebody asked me this, I'm working on it. So I felt that he needed a little bit of, he and his team, which most of them are here. Needed us as council to sort of, to sort of help rank them, tell them like, well, these are the half dozen highest ones. Let's, let's focus on these, get these done, move town forward. And these ones, while they're good ideas, they can wait, or maybe these ones, we can, they can wait even a little bit longer. So what I prepared in front of you, and I have copies for anyone in the audience that wanted, wanted to, wanted to see it. The desk over there. So this is, this is really just an example, and I'll go through it with everybody and get, and get your comments. So first, under the, the title of McCandless Town Administration Goals, items that are not gonna be on this list are the daily job tasks. Salt on the roads, making sure we have a police force paying the bills and things like that. Or resident, resident issue resolution. They come in, you get an email, someone has a barking dog next door, they, they need that, they need that resolved. This isn't sort of the, the day-to-day stuff. This is the bigger tasks, how we move, how we move town forward. So the half dozen things I see on this report are the things that are on the right. Uh, I, I, I call them periodic job tasks that have a heavy time commitment, such as the budget process or such as the audit. Then we might have something on here where we repeatedly. See residents concerned over one, maybe like political signage. That gets to a point that, 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 that we need to, we need to do something. Or it could be escalated. It could be a very serious issue that one or two of our residents have, uh, that have had long term that we may be on this list. I see another thing that could go on this list is policy development. I know one of the things is our, our K nine unit is. Getting a little older to, you know, how are we gonna replace that? Are we gonna replace it? What's the timeframe for that? Or things like, you know, our, our, uh, our internship program as that grows for the social workers. Um, I could also see something like, like, uh, policy advancement. Like we made, I guess the social worker is one of those is, you know, we came to an agreement that we wanted a, a policy to have that. So now we want, we want that moved to be moved forward. I mean, it could be operational improvements like hiring a consultant for the ambulance authority, hiring our, our strategic planning consultant. Or it could be just physical improvements, whether it's to a park, a road, long, long-term things, or our building. Our HVC system and windows. So what I viewed is. And everything under the list, under an item, is just things that either I had asked Bob to do. I was copied on email from one of you for it, or I just remember us talking about it at, at, at a, at a council meeting. So what my thought is, is I'll let everyone from council. Over the next week or so, send me their items and maybe Bob can help me fill this in too. So I want to get a, like a shopping list to say, here's everything that Bob's working on, or I asked Bob to look into, or I asked one of Bob's team, team members to look into. For those things, to improve our town, to move a policy forward, to develop a policy. Then what we'll do is. I have ward of the seven wards over here. So once the overall menu is populated. We will bring that back to a town council meeting and share that with everybody. So everyone in, everyone in town knows at least what the, what the shopping list is. And then from there, we will send it to members of council. And one thing I've had effective in business is we call it a hundred point exercise. So you as a town council member will have a hundred points and you spend them on your priorities. I'm sorry, you might have one priority that you want a hundred points, you might have ten priorities, you give equally weighted to ten points. And when we add them up at the end of the day, there'll be ones that rise to the top. There might be three, there might be five, there might be six. I think we need a handful. And then we, we would deem those, again, you know, in, in, in a meeting like this to say, okay, these are our top priorities. For, uh, for our town administration, and then we would add sort of a timeframe to it in the next quarter or by the end of the third quarter or by the end of the year. So all I'm really trying to do is get a list of our ideas. Improvement items and, and sort of help rank those for, so I'm done talking. So I wanted to hear anyone's input on if this is worthwhile, if it is, would you change anything or concern?
I think it's a good start for our strategic plan.
True, and we're not through that RFP yet to get the strategic planning people, but it's, I think it's not a bad start that, that we can hand that off to that. You know, that person and that strategic planning is probably good to dovetail in with the budget as we get to the fall or something.
Would it be possible to, uh, put a Survey Monkey on Facebook or out to citizens for them to put in their input?
I'd see. Yeah.
Of course, that's another task for the list.
Give you the first task.
Just a thought to hear what the public might be interested in too.
I have concerns if I have a constituent who is passionate about a problem. Do I go back to that constituent and say, I'm sorry, yours isn't as important? How do I handle that?
Yep, that's what you get to do.
I, I guess it would. That call's gonna come in to here next as well. Yeah. So you're not gonna eliminate those problems. You're still gonna receive these complaints. You're still gonna have to answer those issues.
Yeah.
Um, despite you thinking this is going to eliminate them, they're still gonna be there.
Oh, yeah, I don't think it's gonna eliminate them. I'm just trying to.
I understand.
Think that's your intent. Well, I think his intent is to help the administration here have a focus.
Yes.
What's the priorities we this council moves?
The, the staff understands you're still gonna have day-to-day.
Absolutely.
Requests, and we're still gonna deal with those day-to-day requests. We, I, I think the intent with, as, as Mike and I have talked, were those more time-consuming. Things that, that will. Will make it, uh, take a big chunk of our, our time.
I'd like to, I know where you're going with it. I think transitioning more to, I don't know how many are familiar with an operational dashboard. Um, you know, most, a lot of organizations do that now, and it's not necessarily you're eliminating any of the items or prioritizing them. But you're allowing timeframes in the timeframe budgeting. You know, the, the way it's proposed, it seems it's like, pick your top five and that's all we're gonna focus on. And I, I think that's disenfranchising. To, to members of council at times and also possibly the public. If you list them in assigned timeframes in. A policy form of how they're going to get done with objective goals. It's something, you know, which I know, I know Kathy, I, it's, that's, yeah, I mean, I'm in full agreement with you Kathy, and that's. You know, we're trying to Band-Aid something in between. We either need to jump for the strategic plan, but. You're gonna develop the same issues that you're running into now. It's not going to change it enough without that. I, but I'm just having a discussion. I mean, I, I.
Some of these have hard timelines too.
Yeah, and we'll, we will.
Some of the negotiations and RFPs and stuff, so they should just be on there in black, I mean, bolded, cause.
Yeah.
They have to be.
Not necessarily, not necessarily. We, we have a RFP out for our pensions.
Right.
Do we have to do it? No.
Aren't we obligated to do that?
To do?
No, we're not. I mean, it's good business practice to, to go through the process. At the end of the day, we could say we really aren't happy with the proposals. And we're, we're gonna continue with, with our current provide.
But it's already out there, so.
Yes.
That one is, it was just.
Just an example.
Almost everything I hear is already out there.
Right.
And we're already working on it.
In one way or another.
Yeah, and this was just me putting, you know, this, this list will develop. Ms. Clunin, you have.
I, I, I'm looking at it in terms of. I guess if, if I was to look at the administration as, as one person. You know, I like what Jack, what, what Mr. Casey said is those, those deadlines. It's like, you know, eat the frog. That kind of thing where you say, okay, what has to be done today, what has to be done now, let's just get it done with something like getting. The Windows HVAC upgrades. We have the money for it, let's get the proposals, move that to the back of the stack of stuff. Where other things on here, recycling is going to be continuous conversation, stuff like that. So I think.
Are these more, I'm sorry, are these more, should I, should we just list improvement items on here?
Maybe, yeah, cause like, to me, like, like we've been saying, like, I, I agree, it's also part of the strategic planning that maybe. We, we all know the window in HVAC needs upgraded here. What else have, do we have to do? We've all agreed it needs done. We're putting it, you know, the money is coming and we're finding money and. I'm not sure how much more discussion other than, you know, it's a yes or no issue to me.
Yeah, it's budgeted. I see that one. So that's what, maybe it's more improvement or development of policy. Then the simple.
Let's write the check or don't.
Yeah.
It might be interesting to take a reverse approach to it and ask our administration. Where are your time zappers? What's wasting your time and what can we eliminate? What we take off their plate?
I think we're, I think we're putting the carcass where the horse here or whatever you wanna say, because these are things we're already working on. This is all from an administrative perspective. You know, you know, there's probably assignments that are already out there, and if we can eliminate some of the things that aren't. Spending too much time on, what they are spending time on, they can narrow it down as, see. They don't necessarily think we have to do this. I think what we have to focus in on is how to get strategically. Having a five year, not that you can't change, you can change it year in year, but, you know, I think. I think this is administrative thing. I don't think it's, the council should be doing it right.
So how do we? How do we tell Bob what's important? Cause everything can't be important.
Quite frankly, he's a professional. I think it's up to him to decide where his timelines are and where he should, he should put his most effort. And if he needs help, then he should come to us and ask for help. If, if something is taking away from his efforts that. We need to rectify, I'll, I'll throw it out there. It's not gonna be popular, but signs and litter are, I know, a big time zapper. And maybe we should, as a council, figure out how we can help Bob with that. Ms. Zachary came up with the idea of having us send a letter to, oh, maybe we should just ask. Our party members to, our, our parties to please write letters to people that have signs in our. Our area and ask them to please enforce it and try to get that off our table. I don't think our people need to be going out in the six-foot and pulling signs and what have you. We've got more important things to do. I know it's nice to get it done. It's a real pain in the keister. It lasts for about thirty days and then it's gone. And then I'll be happy to drive around, pick up signs for that matter, but we, we need them to be repairing things, fixing things.
I think some, using that as an example, it may come back. The staff coming back to the council saying, we may want to take another look at this.
There, there's an issue with, there's an issue if we're talking sign ordinance, there's an issue with the sign ordinance as written right now. We lack enforcement capabilities along state and county roads. So we have an ordinance that's written a certain way, but we actually cannot enforce it. The county and state have not given us authorization, so we technically cannot enforce it along county and state roads. So that becomes an issue.
And you wanna interject very quickly, if we are getting into a discussion over the sign ordinance.
No, I, I threw that as an example.
I just wanna warn you that we.
Yeah, let's bring it back into where we're at. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Appreciate that. Is there a public comment?
Um, pardon me, but it's the town's responsibility to worship policy.
Yeah, that's right.
Specific to the, to this.
We also write the policy.
So I guess I'll ask the question again is, how does Bob's team know what's the most important things to counsel? They can't, to me, the question, the answer can't be all of them. You just need to set reasonable deadlines. Am I the only one that has that opinion?
So we can. Us put. Some timeframes to those, so that you're. Some timeframes to those, so that you're aware of what are. Recommended timeframes are for these, what I would ask the council is to, to take a look at the, the items to see if there's something that we've.
Missed, yeah, that's, that's definitely one of.
This was really just a, a, a ten minute conversation that Mike and I had today that developed. The list, we'll fine tune the list, Mike had it pretty much developed, so if there's something that we're missing. Let us know, and then we'll put a timetable to these things.
Well, these, a lot of these activities are one-time events and then they're gone, so.
Some are, but improvement items like our K nine unit, okay, when our current K nine retires. What do we do? There's research that our team needs to do on the cost of it, possible funding. Hiring a police officer with this, that it just can't be Bob, go do it, it's. Bob, we need you to pull this together, this is a high priority for council because we want it done by the end of the year, blah, blah, blah.
If we set dates, you know, for these items, expectations, I mean, most of us, I mean, some of these are specific to council members' problems that they've brought to here. If we set an exponential, ex, a, a date here of what we're expecting. If Bob monthly produces a report and, and the green ones are on target, and the yellow ones are ones he needs to focus on to bring them to target, and the red ones are ones we're not going to get on target. You know, and that's a prioritization of where we are in the timeline frame, but at least we have an understanding of where that is to where we're trying to get to. You know, you're going to hear it from everyone, everyone thinks everyone's important here, but if we have a date or a, a reasonable timeline at least. You know, we know the progress is being made, and it's easier to sell me on that than saying, take the top five and worry about the rest later. I don't want to lose what's on here, but if you tell me we're working, you know, the police one's important, maybe it's in green now because we, it's a two-year program. So that's not, you know, but I'm more concerned that yellow because, you know, police contract negotiations is coming up, that's a more important one, we're in yellow, we're going to, Bob's going to know to focus on that one because that's more prevalent right now than the police stuff part. That's, I mean, I.
It also gets down to a point of delegation, wouldn't that be Chief Hock's responsibility?
Some of it will be delegation in terms of, you, you could run a couple of different things simultaneously. Where a lot of my time would be taken up in the police negotiations.
Yes.
Where the chief is, and Tricia might be in more support role in those cases. My time will be more heavily invested. Chief can be focused in other areas, so I, I think I, I see where you're going, and I think we can do something together.
So this doesn't go on all evening, I guess, would everyone be okay if I just emailed council and everyone just, just like this, tell me what. Your items are for improvement or long-term improvements for the town? Um, then I'll, I'll just list them all, one, someone might have two, someone might have twenty.
Can't read that, the administration gives us the timelines.
We can do that. The timelines, don't they need to know what the task is? What happens, I'm missing something here.
While you're asking us to give you.
Yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're saying the same thing, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Okay, closing, general public, is there any comments before we adjourn the meeting into executive session?
I'd like to make a comment. I would like to thank our administration, our council, and the citizens for sending me to ALAM and to the new elected officials course. I found both to be very interesting and informative. But thank you.
Comments from the, those in. No, anyone online? To adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel. Second, everybody in favor?
Aye.